I have to kind of keep the, keep the noise level down. Because each item has to be manually called by roll. And each person has to be heard. So with that, I'm sorry.
Just as a recommendation, actually, uh, the mics don't have to stay open. All of the counselors have been controlling their own mics.
Okay.
So they can just click on when they vote and click back off. That way we control some of the crossover.
Okay.
Okay.
Alrighty, so let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Here.
Counselor Rudd.
Here.
Counselor Green. Counselor Penny Agua.
Here.
Counselor Penny Agua.
Here, I'm here.
Carney.
Here.
Counselor Hogan.
Here.
Counselor Majoke.
Here.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Allen. Counselor Driscoll.
Here.
Is Counselor Allen out there? I thought I saw her a minute ago.
She was, not sure what happened.
Okay, Madam President, all present with the exception of Counselor Allen.
And she'll probably come in. Okay, um, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 30th meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Please.
Okay, on the, on the motion to approve the minutes, Counselor Bay?
Yes.
No, it's Counsel Driscoll.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I'm now calling the roll to approve the minutes.
Yeah, chill, Joe. He's calling the rolls, yes.
Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua? Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen? Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
It's approved by eight to zero Counselor Allen is not, is not present.
Thank you. Are there any petitions?
No, Madam President.
Are there any committee reports?
Nope.
Are there any communications?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Rudd?
Thank you, Madam President, I have item eight A. It is local law. It approves the money for the police benevolent association contract. Um, I'd like to introduce the law, but I would urge that people vote no on this item. Um, there are three questions. How much do the cost? What value do we get? How do we pay? And over time, the answers just fell short. In the simplest terms, we just don't have the money to pay for this contract. So with that, I introduce it and I urge everyone to vote against it.
Item eight A. Are there any, uh, wait.
Just any discussion.
I need, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
No.
Counselor Rudd?
No.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Penny Agua?
No.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
No.
Counselor Majoke?
No.
Counselor Allen? Counselor Driscoll?
Um.
Counselor Allen?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So my phone just connected, so I'm, that's what you guys were voting on. I'm gonna need you to repeat it.
Alright, it's the financing for the PVA police contract.
Oh, no.
So Counselor, uh, Allen, we're voting yes or no on the local law for the police contract. What is your vote?
No.
Okay. Counselor Driscoll?
No.
The item is defeated one to eight.
Thank you. I have item nine. I would like to introduce it and urge its adoption. Are there objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd? Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes, sorry, I muted.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
It's unanimous, nine to nothing.
Thank you. Counselor Bay?
Thank you, Madam President, I have items number ten and eleven. I'd like to introduce them both and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item two. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
It's, it's adopted nine to nothing, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Item eleven. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counsel, is it a yes? Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
It's approved nine to nothing, unanimous.
Thank you. Counselor Rudd?
Thank you, Madam President, I have items twelve through fourteen. Item twelve, I'm withdrawing, given that the corresponding, um, item was defeated. Item thirteen and fourteen, I would like to introduce and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item twelve is being withdrawn. Item thirteen. Are there any objection? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
It's adopted nine to oh, unanimous.
Thank you. Item fourteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
It's nine oh, unanimous.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Thank you, Madam President. I have items fifteen through twenty-two. Item sixteen will be withdrawn. The other items, I'd like to introduce them and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item fifteen. Are there any objections?
Yes.
Alrighty, thank you.
Okay, item fifteen is objected to by Counselor Driscoll and is automatically tabled.
Yes. Item sixteen is being withdrawn. Item seventeen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
It's adopted unanimously, nine to nothing.
Thank you. Item eighteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Adopted, nine to nothing, unanimous.
Thank you. Item nineteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
It's unanimous, nine to zero adopted.
Thank you. Item twenty. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Adopted nine to zero.
Thank you. Item twenty. Are there any objections?
I think it's like twenty-one, aren't we?
Okay, I lost my place, I'm sorry. Item twenty-one. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
The item is adopted nine to zero.
Thank you. Item twenty-two. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
The item is adopted nine to nothing.
Thank you. Counselor Penny Agua?
I've introduced it in item twenty-three. It's, uh, ready for its adoption.
Thank you.
Ready for its adoption.
Item twenty-three. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
It's adopted nine to zero.
Thank you. Counselor Carney?
Thank you, Madam President. I have items twenty-four through thirty. Uh, unfortunately, twenty-six is going to be withdrawn. All other items are ready, and I'd like to introduce them and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item twenty-four. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
The item was adopted nine to zero.
Item twenty-five. Are there many objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua? Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen? Counselor Allen? Are you there, Counselor Allen?
She appears to be having some technical difficulties.
Okay.
Yes.
Pardon me, is that Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Okay, she voted yes. Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Okay, it's adopted nine to zero.
Yes.
Okay, you got it, thank you.
Alrighty. Item twenty-six is being withdrawn.
Yeah.
Item twenty. Huh?
Right.
Item twenty-seven. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen? Are you there, Counselor Allen? Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Kapanas? You missed me.
Didn't I call your name, Counselor?
I don't think you did.
I apologize. Counselor Hogan?
Yes, thank you.
Apologize.
That's okay, God.
Is, is Counselor Allen back on?
She just texted me, said she has some difficulty, so I think she's gonna try to call him.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay.
Is this Counsel, Counselor Allen, are you voting yes on item twenty-seven? Or no?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Item twenty-seven is adopted nine to zero.
Thank you. Item twenty-eight. Are there any ob- objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan? Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Okay, the item was adopted nine to nothing.
Thank you. Item twenty-nine. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
The item was adopted nine to zero.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Madam President, I have items.
Actually, Counselor, we have a number thirty, I believe.
Number thirty as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me back up. Item number thirty, are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Item thirty is adopted nine to zero.
Thank you. Now, to Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Madam President, I have items thirty-one through fifty-one. All items are ready, I would like to introduce them and urge their adoption.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item thirty-one. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
The item is adopted nine to zero.
Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Okay, on item thirty-two, Counselor Bay? Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Penny Agua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
The item was adopted nine to zero.
Thank you. Item thirty-three. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?[1250.98]
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke? Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
The item was adopted, nine to zero.
Thank you. Item thirty-four. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Okay, then item thirty-four is adopted, nine to zero.
Thank you. Item thirty-five. Are there any objections?
That has to be a killer.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Alright, somebody's sound effects is killing us, but go ahead, President.
I know, I know it is. John?
Yes.
Alrighty, item thirty-five. Any objection? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Item thirty-five is adopted, nine to nothing.
Thank you. Item thirty-six. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Item thirty-six is adopted, nine to nothing.
Thank you. Somebody's background noise. I don't know where it's coming from. Alrighty. Item thirty-seven. Any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke? Are you there, Counselor Majoke? Okay. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
It's adopted, nine to zero, number thirty-seven.
Thank you. Item thirty-eight. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Item thirty-eight is adopted, nine to zero.
Thank you. Item thirty-nine. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Item thirty-nine is adopted, nine to nothing.
Thank you. Item forty. Any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Item forty is adopted, nine to zero.
Item forty-one. Any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Item forty-one is adopted, nine to zero.
Thank you. Item forty-two. Any objection? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Okay, number forty-two is adopted, nine to zero.
Thank you. Item forty-three. Any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Hogan?
Yes.
Counselor Majoke?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll?
Yes.
Item forty-three is adopted, nine to zero.
Thank you. Item forty-four. Any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Rudd?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua?
Yes.